Have a few moments to remember Celia Tejeda, who passed away in the last couple of weeks. Please be seated. And when you're ready, the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Shiglin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have none.
None? Department head reports?
Large crowd today. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Public Works has several projects towards the end of installation. I have been mentioning these projects and saying, "Two more weeks, two more weeks." So I apologize for the delays. And all our projects have been complicated than originally thought. So they require more planning, more equipment, more supplies, and more time. So thank you for your patience while we continue to work on them, like the JMF scoreboard, the Phoenix system at Three Palms, the Sembra Fountain. We are making good progress. It's just taking time. During the off-season, the crew will work on other several projects as well that will be refurbishing the casino way benches with MKS, the fire hydrant repairs with PERC, guardrail on East Whitley, paver replacement on Front Street, fencing at JMF, and the cemetery. And those are just to name a few. We have also others I haven't mentioned, but don't want to overwhelm you. Meanwhile, the crew continues to do routine operations like pressure washing, alleyways, benches, sweeping in the morning, front street landscaping, and whole patching throughout town. On the administrative side, we're working with the mechanics on implementing a fleet management system that will give us inventory, preventative maintenance tracking of the fleet, track labor hours, supplies, equipment. We also developed a facility management plan and condition assessment report where a few of us will assess each facility and able to capture the repair needs, estimated costs, priority, all that good stuff. And finally, we developed a tailgate training program where each maintenance crew, Harbor Mechanics, and Public Works will, once a week, go over 10 to 15-minute safety talks. This will be documented for attendance and helps promote a safety culture. Any questions?
No, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Alguiria, Fire Chief. I want to thank those that came out for the 9/11 memorial stairs/ ramp climb at the casino and thank the island company for allowing us to use the casino. It was fun to do the ramps. We haven't done that in a long time, but we did 10 sets up and down. Couple of the island company crews joined us, families, and Val. Val was there. She made it up a couple of ramps.
Okay.
It was a good turnout. Next week, next council meeting, I'll be at our annual LA area Fire Chiefs conference. I won't make it on this October 7th meeting. And then, as you can tell, we have a huge following tonight. So let's start with our promotions first. We have someone retiring. We'll get to that at the end. But Ryan Keyline, come up front. Ryan Keyline will be promoted to cap the position of captain starting October 2nd. He's going to take Phil Menudo's spot as captain. Ryan came to the island, I don't know the year he came, 2003, I believe, but in 2004, he moved here for a reserve job. And we were, he spent a few months with us at the old station, and we moved to the new station. So he came here as a reserve. Didn't get hired right away as a firefighter, and then eventually got hired as a firefighter, and he's worked his way up through the ranks. And now he's got a family, and they're not going anywhere. So congratulations, Ryan will be our new captain.
Like a grass.
Firefighter Jimmy Buddy will be promoted. He will be our new engineer, the driver on the shift. Jimmy's Avalon High School graduate, class of 2018. And Jimmy was hired as a reserve on his 18th birthday. So I don't know of anyone that's really come up and been with the department since they've been an adult. So congratulations, engineer Jimmy Buddy. Next, Daniel Danny Pedrosa. He's been with the department a few years. Graduated Avalon High School 2019, went to Long Beach City College, and then graduated the Fire Academy last December, November, last December, and has been part of our reserves for a couple of years. He will be our newest full-time firefighter, and he led the charge, and we all had to keep up with him on the ramps. So thank you and congratulations to Danny. Last, we have Captain Phil Menudo, retiring. His last shift will be October, September 27th this year, and his retirement date's September 30th, 2025. If you want to go ahead and read.
Yeah, I have a proclamation. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Philip Buddy Menudo for his years of service with the Avalon Fire Department. This is a long one, Buddy. Whereas it is with great pride, we recognize Fire Captain Philip Buddy Menudo and honor him for his 21-year career with the City of Avalon Fire Department. And whereas a fourth-generation island resident, Buddy was born in Temple City, California, and was brought back to the island the day after his birth to his family home on Tremont. And whereas Buddy attended and later graduated from Avalon High School, where he met the love of his life and future wife Erica Smith. Whereas he and Erica raised two children on the island, son Retton and daughter Taren, and were recently overjoyed with the arrival of their granddaughter and sixth-generation islander Jordan. And whereas Buddy worked multiple jobs in Avalon and has traveled all over the U.S. racing dirt bikes and served as an essential figure in the development and successful implementation of the Catalina Grand Prix in 2010. And whereas in 2003, in an attempt to be the first to complete the famous Barstow-to-Vegas race in a golf cart, Buddy inadvertently delayed the start of his tenure with the City of Avalon Fire Department due to a race injury. And whereas Buddy eventually joined his brother Frank in the Avalon Fire Department, becoming a relief firefighter in 2004, a full-time firefighter engineer in January 2005, and finally promoted to captain in May of 2021. And whereas Captain Menudo's depth of understanding of his community, his patient temperament, and more importantly, his plumbing skills and knowledge of diesel engines has made his greatest assets. And whereas Captain Menudo became certified as a peer support counselor, transforming his lived experiences into hope and practical support for those others in the department and throughout the city when dealing with tough emotional calls of duty. And whereas, while on duty, Captain Menudo has demonstrated care for safety, striving to protect all of Avalon, acting with a calm, level head, fostering camaraderie, and making a lasting impact on the department and community. And whereas Captain Menudo's accomplishments and attributes are many and varied, including EMT, USCG boat captain, commercial lobster fisherman, respected colleague, leader, mentor, advocate, friend, neighbor, father, husband, and now grandpa. Now therefore it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Avalon does hereby congratulate Fire Captain Philip Menudo as he ends his faithful, loyal, and dedicated service to the City of Avalon's Fire Department and begins a new chapter of civilian life as he retires from public service on September 30, 2025, dated this 16th day of September 2025, and signed by the Avalon City Council. Congratulations. Speed, speed!
Thank you. It's been an honor. I couldn't have done it out. I, you know, got to work with some of the most bravest and strongest, you know, people that I know. It's been a good run. Good time for me to go. It's hard, but you got to do it sometime, and I appreciate everybody in here and council for what you guys have done and chief for always being there, understanding, and just having a great team behind me and looking forward to see how they grow and keep it together for the community. That's about it.
Thank you so much for all your service. Come on, David Hart.
After 31 years, I never knew his name was Philip.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So we've had a busy couple of weeks since the last time we met. We'll start off with, most of it's good, but the first one, we had a significant fire event the night of our last council meeting. We ended up having four boats involved in the fire, two inflatable skiffs, a 24-footer and a 30-footer. We ended up, one of our patrol boats and the Baywatch boat ended up putting water and foam on all four of those. We ended up towing the 30-footer out of the harbor while it was on fire, and Baywatch was putting foam on it. So they ended up taking it out front. Baywatch had to put a lot more foam on it, and it eventually went out, but we ended up losing that boat. Two inflatable skiffs, the 24-footer took some fire damage. So not the best night for Avalon Harbor, but if there is a bright side, it could have been worse. Also, we had one minor injury to one of our guys, but he'll live. And, but nobody else was hurt. So that was the night of our last meeting. On a brighter side, since our last meeting, we've had several events in the harbor. We had the outrigger race, 80 teams, 80 chase boats all at once. That went off, knock on wood, you know, pretty well, pretty smoothly. They came in Saturday afternoon, and they left Sunday morning, same thing, 80 boats all at once. So that went really well, actually, I think, this year. So that was a plus. It's a pretty cool event that they do for that. We also had the Bend Did Go, which is a Ben Carlson Memorial paddleboard, which was last weekend. That's about 50 boats. So it's a memorial for a lifeguard that was killed in the line of duty out of Newport Beach. So that's, I think this is the 10th annual one, and that one also went very smoothly. We had some fishing tournaments, the Catalina Yacht Club, Billfish Tournament, Pesky, a few others that I can't remember right now. Coming up on the 22nd, here on Monday, is one of my favorite events in the harbor. It's the War Heroes on the Water. So they'll be coming over, doing their thing. They'll fish, I think they fish for four days, but they'll be here on Monday, the 22nd. We have an event out on the pier. So it's where they, these boats, basically, they take veterans that have been injured in one way or another in service to the country, to our country, and they take them out fishing. So it's a really cool event. I encourage you to check it out. And so they're going to be putting on food, they'll be weighing in fish. It's a really neat event. So if you get a chance, stop out there and check it out. They're going to be getting ready for it, so you'll see flags, the armed service flags going up on the pier. Caleb puts lights across, so that'll be going on the rest of this week as they get ready for that event. Now to your favorite part, the stats. Since last two weeks, we've had about 1,076 boats for 3,532 mooring nights, which is pretty much on par, almost identical to last year, so not much change there. We had six Baywatch assists, two emergency medicals, 30, or excuse me, 16 enforcement calls, and 126 security patrols. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
All right. Now it's your turn.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor, David Hart, Community Service. On September 6th and 7th, the SCORU S outrigger championships happened here on Catalina. There were 75 canoes that raced both ways, which led to 130, I mean, 1,350 paddlers being on the island on that Saturday. This was the first year we extended activities into the night with the Rum Garden, sponsored by Catalina Rum Company, and Los Cislenos rocking the stage till 8:00 PM. Very successful event. The heart of Avalon came alive today at 4:00 PM on Wrigley Stage to celebrate Mexican Independence Day. The crowd was ignited by the passionate cry of Dolores, led by the incredible Steve Hall. This historic battle cry, first shouted by Miguel Hidago y Castillo on September 16th, 1810, marked the dawn of Mexico's fight for freedom. The celebration continued with the stunning performance by Grupo de Ballettierra Bella. They transported us across Mexico with vibrant cultural dancers from four different regions, filling the stage with color, music, and energy. It was truly unforgettable celebration of Mexican heritage and independence. The Art Festival is coming this weekend, September 18th through the 21st. There will be over 45 vendors of art, in the case of photos, custom jewelry, custom clothing, custom painting, custom, how you want to say, furniture. So I would say, go down, check it out, get yourself a very unique Christmas present or some fine art for your home. The Catalina Film Festival is back, running from September 24th to 28th. This year's festival will feature nearly 200 films and a host of exciting events right here on Catalina Island. Dive into a world of cinema with film screenings, join insightful industry panels, rub elbows with filmmakers and professionals, networking events. It is the 15th anniversary of this festival, so they said there'll be some surprises this year. So go on out, check out the films. They'll be, they'll be here in the chamber, as well up in the, at the school, the old church, as well as in the casino ballroom. For more details, visit catalinafilm.org. The surfacing at Avalon Kids Park Playground was repaired today by Robertson Surfacing. They came to fix large cracks from the first group that put in there. So they were kind enough to come back immediately for the new surface to cure properly. The park will remain closed for the next 72 hours. It will, we expect it to be playable by Friday afternoon. A little update on street vending. We have given three new permits out. That means three people have given up their permits, so we got three new permits out. So they are in the process of going through organizing their business right now, from their cart to all the permitting that's required by LA County Health. The other three permits, because you've probably seen that nobody's really been out right now, but the other three permits are still either being held up by LA County Health or they're close to completing the process and should be out again within a month or two. And is there any more questions?
Is there a waiting list as well?
There's still a waiting list.
Okay.
I think there's still like about eight or nine people still on the waiting list.
Thanks for the update, Dave.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. I don't have a full revenue update. I reported at the last meeting for the month of July. Cross-channel and moorings were up. I expect TOT is going to be down, but I'll have a full report out of fiscal '25 and the summer at the next council meeting.
Any questions? No, thank you, Matt. Assistant City Manager? Oh, I'm sorry, Matt King.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. On October 7th, we are hosting a CalCity's pre-conference event for 41, a total of 41 signups so far. So mayors, council members, executive management, team members, all the way from as far north as Humboldt County, all the way down to San Diego County. So really excited to show these folks Catalina Island, the City of Avalon, share with them some of the projects and programs that we're working on for the city. So that'll be great, Tuesday, October 7th. And then just another plug for the bulky item pickup event, hazardous waste, here at City Hall, Saturday, October 25th, from 8:00 AM to noon. Appliances, tires, batteries, paint, oil, you name it, we'll accept it, and then it'll ship off the island. So that's exciting. Last week, we did another barge shipment over town for eight motorcycles, six golf carts, three vehicles, and those all went to Kruger Toe for processing. So great work to code enforcement, Sheriff's Office, and Public Works. Code enforcement has been extremely busy, issued 240 citations last month in August, 30 red tags, responded to 35 emergency calls for service, a total of 17 graffiti reports taken, 50 animal control calls for service, four stop work orders, five home inspections with For Leaf, our building inspector, and eight violations for unbroken-down cardboard boxes in our commercial district, 20 public nuisance reports. So yeah, they've been super busy this summer.
Really busy.
And then just some reports, statistics, again, for last month for the Olens Cube. It accepted 7,325 bottles and cans. So that's over $410 worth of CRV redemption for our community members. So that's super exciting.
Very much any questions of Jocelyn? Okay.
Community Mayor, City Council, City Staff, sorry it was late today. It got me way off track and a little confused getting up here, but I made it. Since our last meeting, we had 86 calls for service from the public. The deputies made 228 observations. They made 27 traffic stops and eight pedestrian stops. There were six arrests that were made. One was for battery, one was for unlicensed driver, one was for drunken public, two were for domestic violence, and one was for DUI. Just want the public to know that we are really working hard on the no helmets and bikes moving too fast down the street and the stop sign violations. Please talk to your kids. The tickets are being written, and we really prefer not to. We'd rather see everybody carry the helmet on and simply be there just to wave at them as opposed to give them an expensive ticket. So please put those helmets on. And we may have a few left at the station. Come on by if you need them, and, you know, if we don't have them, we'll find some more.
You know, it's just that you've been, the Sheriff's Department is, in my mind, has been very kind and very lenient, and I think, I'm speaking for the community, where it's time to tighten up. Because I still get complaints every day about licensed drivers and all of that, and I don't know if you all agree, but the parents aren't paying attention. If this is the only way to get their attention, I think a ticket might be the way to do it. My opinion.
I agree.
I'm just curious, is there a minimum age for electric bicycles?
For what, I'm sorry?
For e-bikes?
Yes, there is. So it depends on what level e-bike it is. If it's a Class II or higher, you have to be 16 or over to ride it. And what that means is basically that it goes over 20 miles an hour. Under 20 miles an hour, then, you know, a younger child can ride it. But it's kind of hard to determine that sometimes. A lot of our bikes, they don't, they're not just pedal assists, they actually have a thruster. But yeah, if they go faster than 20, they're supposed to be over 16 years old.
Because I don't know, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but there's this teeny weeny kid that drives up and down Whitley. I mean, he's six, seven, eight, something like that, really little, on a little bike, and he just flies. And he's got a couple of friends that are older, you know, so I was just like, seriously? Is that legal? So I don't know. Maybe keep your eyes peeled?
Yeah, no, we're on the same page. I know exactly what you're talking about, and it's very frustrating. And just let the public know that if it doesn't have pedals, it's not legal on the street. You can't ride that on any public street in the entire state, let alone Catalina. You cannot be on those bikes. It's not legal, and we will take it every single time.
He just scares me because he's so little. And, you know, he'd be hard to see in a, in a full-size vehicle or, you know, even a golf cart. So, you know, that, that's the only thing that concerns me is just, it scares me. I hope he never gets hurt, you know?
Any other questions?
I had one more question. I did have a resident curious if the Sheriff's Department offers fingerprinting services.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Fingerprint services, if the Sheriff's Department offered those services for fingerprints?
I must.
Fingerprints.
On death.
Do you think?
Fingerprints.
Fingerprint services. Sorry.
That's okay.
Only if you get arrested. Unfortunately, we will fingerprint you in booking, but no, we don't do those services on the island. There are some stations that have that, like Lakewood Station. They have a day every week. I'm not doing, the day it is, I haven't worked there in 20 years, but they did do a fingerprinting there. Typically, what we do is we'll send you over to pack and ship to get life scanned over there. It's, I think it's $50 for a general background, and there's also some places in Long Beach, but no, we don't do it.
Okay, thank you. I'll mention that.
Sorry, my hearing is horrendous. Back during COVID, and you guys were talking, I was like, I guess she said this, and I just gave you an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, City Manager? Oh! Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Kelly Ruffo, Contract Planner. Just wanted to give a brief on the items that you're going to be seeing at the next few meeting, public meetings. So tomorrow night at 5:00 PM is our regular Planning Commission meeting. On the agenda tomorrow is an informational presentation to Planning Commission related to all of the updates to the transient rental license regulations that were reviewed, approved by council earlier this year. And there will also be a presentation by the City Manager's Office regarding policy options for processing the TRL applications once we reach the license cap for new licenses. So that is being brought before them for review and recommendations to the council when that policy comes back to you from City Manager's Office. At the October 7th City Council meeting, Planning will be bringing forward updates to the reasonable accommodation procedures that are in Title I of the municipal code. So reasonable accommodation proceeds, only the first five transient rental license applications, only the first five transient rental license applications that have been on hold since before the moratorium. So our plan is to essentially bring five applications a month over the next several months to Planning Commission to essentially clear out the queue of folks who had applied during the moratorium, and then see where we're at in terms of...
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to be busy in that department.
We're definitely going to be busy over the next few months, especially with the transient rentals, but there'll also be some additional code updates coming to you as well, sort of in between.
Right. Thank you, Kelly. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. A few items tonight. Just wanted to bring to Council's attention that the city's outdoor dining program is set to expire at the end of this year, so end of December. That's how it was originally set up. It was coincide with the, maybe the allowances by the Board of Health for COVID. Those have been incorporated. So our recommendation, Staff's recommendation, would be to continue that program. We think it works well. We haven't had any problems. It's, you know, generates a little bit of revenue for the city, but really, it's a benefit, we think, down there overall. So unless there's any objections at the next council meeting, we'll bring back a recommendation just to reincorporate that and maybe put some periodic reviews in it, but not have an expiration to it, just allow it to run. Thanks. And then, so just briefly on the Five Corners project, as you can see, it keeps moving along at a very rapid pace. We're happy to see that. Sidewalks are being put in on the other side of Tremont, up around the corner. And the last household obstruction that we, Mr. Greenlaw said, we gave them until after Labor Day. It was a week or two after Labor Day, and that is down. So that's moving along, and we've had some positive communications with Edison. So hopefully, soon, we'll be able to bring you a cost-sharing agreement with Edison regarding their utilities as we start getting closer to going into the intersection here. Speaking of Edison, just wanted to report that they've resolved all the billing issues that they were having up at Eucalyptus Gardens. If you recall, there was a number of confusing bills that were going on up there. So thank you to Selena for taking care of that, but that's resolved at this point. And then, finally, I just want to indicate that I appreciate having the opportunity to attend Gateway City's COG, the Regional Conference and Retreat that was here last week. I know Lisa's probably going to report out on that, so I won't steal her thunder headlines, but just appreciate being able to attend that. A lot of great ideas, a lot of great information coming out of that. And just a quick reminder that we had to move the October Planning Commission meeting to accommodate the deadline that we have for a significant grant that we're applying for, for South Beach. So we needed that extra time to get that information through Planning Commission so we could get it on the grant application and get that filed by the end of the month. So that's why we moved it up a week. And hopefully, fingers crossed, that... And hopefully, fingers crossed, that grant or the other one that's already, that we've already applied for comes through on South Beach and we can, that project becomes a reality. So we will let you know as soon as we hear something. Thank you.
But we don't have, do we have regular Scott on there?
Well, we have, I'm sorry, we have Scott Shass, that sits here today in place of regular Scott.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to report?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, Council Members?
Nothing for me this week.
Nothing for me.
It's all Lisa. I have nothing to report.
I have very little to report, other than attending the Gateway City's COG Retreat and the good news that they're going to extend it to two days next year as opposed to overnight. So they're actually bringing additional revenue into the city, which is great. It grows every year, which is also encouraging for us that depend on tourism. I think that's fantastic. There were a lot of reviews of projects at the retreat this year, a number of metro and transit projects that are happening throughout Southern California. The biggest ones that are going to impact us are just the redesign of the Schumacher Bridge, which is the main bridge that we all take out of usually getting to and from the landing there in downtown. And had some really great opportunities to speak on a number of topics, but including and not limited to homelessness and maternal health. And so I'm excited and encouraged by kind of where we're going with that. The COG has really done a great job in the cities of creating effective homeless response, which includes not only temporary and/or longer-term temporary housing, but also services. So job training, addiction services, mental health services, facilities, and just general psychological assistance. I think it's the thing that's actually making an impact. We've seen a drop in numbers in the region by several hundred people over the last couple of years, which is considerable, realizing that there's more people that are becoming homeless every day and that number is still dropping. So it's encouraging. I would love to see us try to implement something similar here. I don't know about space, time, money, and all the things that it would take to do that. But I do think that there's a space there. And I talked about this before and unfortunately had some family emergencies that popped up, so I wasn't able to hold a meeting before the COG meeting. But really, do you want to dig in this fall with Sheriff, with Rec Department, with what everyone is doing at the hospital? What it is that you're seeing now that's beneficial and working? Where the gaps are that you need extra services and where we can try to go after, whether it's funds, people, anything that we can do to help? So it was an encouraging day. It's nice to have all of those people. It was a handful of City Managers. You missed the exciting after-party at the locker room, thankfully, I think. City Managers really did a good job of representing there. So, but it was, it was nice to get to not only connect on all these different topics, but also have them here in town and just get to relax for a minute. They got to have some anonymity for a little bit and just kind of decompress. So overall, a great time and looking forward to next year's as well. And yeah, otherwise, I was talking with the City Manager prior to our meeting. I attended a Student Youth Travel Association conference in Georgia. And to see the conference space they had and what they were able to accommodate with that conference space was interesting and something that I feel like we get, I get asked about in my daily job all the time, but was maybe a long-term goal to kind of reach for with banquet space, meeting rooms, breakout rooms, office space to be able to use if you're having to work during a conference. It was something that is a pipe dream that could become a reality. And then, yeah, otherwise, I just wanted to remind people that the school district meetings, the board meetings, those are being still streamed with the school. They're happening every other Wednesday currently. I know the physical location on the mainland is going to be changing next month, apparently, but people should be voicing concerns there, maybe instead of on Facebook or instead of on social media. The people who can actually impact change and listen to your concerns are at those meetings. So I would encourage you to get the information of when they happen, show up in person, state your case, and that way you know at least you're trying to impact change positively. I've been happy to go to those meetings and represent Avalon for a bit of time. I'm not doing that this year, but I think the parents and community members need to step up and do part of that as well. So just throwing that out there, yeah. That's what I got.
Well, with the conference, I'm sorry, I got there, has everybody started?
You got to see people out there. We didn't, but it's still good. Yes, I appreciate you going there. Thank you.
But that was fun. And the outrigger race was awesome. That was nice to be up there. But I don't know if any of you get it. I got a survey from Columbia University and they're asking about how threatened we feel on our City Council. And I filled that sucker out and it really was in depth and it was really long and I finally, they didn't have a not-applicable place, you know? It's just like, instead, you just don't want to respond to it. So at the end, I said, no, I just needed an NA because we don't have the threats and the people outside our houses and vandalizing and needing to call sheriffs for everything. So we probably skewed the survey just a little bit by being in such a wonderful place that unfortunately, we don't have to worry. Anyway, that's all. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
A little fable. Someone is waiting for a service and the service doesn't appear for almost an hour. What do you do considering you're wheelchair-bound? I've been thinking about this. My wife is up in the hospital, almost hospice. And my question to you is, if the wrong person, and this is on YouTube, by the way, if the right person in the wrong situation, as a lawyer, happens to see that me talking about this, how are you affected as Council granting the permit for circuit? You know how to get ahold of me. Thank you very much.
I'm assuming, I'm sorry, you're talking about our little taxi service, our coast, our circuit?
Yes, I didn't expect a response from anybody, but thank you.
No, I wanted to make sure we were.
The circuit has two cabs, high cabs. One is handicapped equipped, one is not. I'll just bluntly say, we were out in 72-degree weather with 82% humidity for almost an hour. She's wheelchair-bound. They ended up at the hospital. I mean, give people that are now considered by this cab company second-class citizens a leg up. It's absolutely horrid. Thank you.
No, we appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just an update from Catalina Island Health. I'm excited to share that we are partnering once again with Alina Medical Imaging to bring the mobile mammogram unit here to the island on Saturday, September 27th and Sunday, September 28th. It will be parked on Crescent Avenue near the Blue Water Grill. And appointments are available from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM both days. Most experts agree that women over 40 should be checked and they're typically covered by insurance. However, we strongly encourage you to check that beforehand because things constantly change these days with that. Women under the age of 40 that wish to be checked must meet certain requirements and it may not be covered by insurance. So just be aware and check that ahead of time as well. Individuals who do not have insurance may be eligible to receive a free screening courtesy of California's cancer detection program, Every Woman Counts. And you can fill out that application day of any of those days, that weekend, and they'll check your requirements right there. So I'm going to leave flyers. It's all, it's on social media, it's in the newspaper, everything's there for that. And then on that same weekend, on Sunday, September 28th, we'll get together and do a Catalina's More Than Pink Walk and Paddle Event, meeting at the Wrigley Stage at noon. Encourage lots of people to come out and support, walk out to the casino, back out to the Mole and back for a couple of photo ops. And I just wanted to quickly say thanks to Avalon Freight Services for donating the shipment of the mobile unit to and from the island and to the City of Avalon for waiving the permit fees. And then additional thanks to the Susan G. Komen Foundation, Love Catalina Island, Councilmember De La Rosa and Yoli Say for their support and partnership in making the entire Breast Cancer Awareness Weekend happen. So we hope you'll join us.
And what is the phone number for, to make a reservation?
It is, I skipped over it because I was running out of time, 909-622-3166. And then I'll leave these here. It has a QR code as well. The appointments are made through Alina. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Am I allowed to ask her a question on this topic? Sure.
It's fortuitous that you're here because I was asking Lisa earlier, is there a program on the island to get rid of expired medication, prescription or non? What do we do with it?
Yes. You can take it to Leo's. They have some, and request behind the counter, they have some packaging that, information about that with you as well via email, so.
Sorry, I missed it.
No, that's okay. There's a lot that happens, so no worries. But yes.
Okay, cool. Good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Galen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jocelyn with the Catalina Island Swim Club. This Saturday, September 20th, is our annual Pan Can Swim. And it's a fundraiser for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. If you're interested in donating money, so, yeah.
Are you going to have some kind of a boat that follows you around?
Yes, yeah, well, paddlers, kayakers will have some boats out there, yeah, to make sure everybody's safe in the water. But yeah, it's been a great, great annual swim, great annual tradition.
Excellent. Thank you, Jocelyn. Okay, now we're on to presentations. We're going to start with Kelly.
Good evening again. So tonight, I'm just providing a brief presentation, kind of going overview of sort of the city's general plan, just to, as an informational item. And it's actually a good evening to have this since it's sort of relevant to the item I have later on the agenda this evening. So I guess to start, what is the general plan? So California state law requires that each city and county adopt a general plan essentially to control the physical development and, for the community. In practice, what that means is the general plan is essentially the blueprint for the city. It's the highest-level planning document from which all other planning regulations and city policies and programs are supposed to essentially tear off of and help implement. Development of the general plan is done with a substantial amount of community outreach. It's meant to be a community document. It's not just something that's created by the elected officials and city staff. It's essentially a visioning document for the community as well. General plans are adopted by resolution of the City Council with the exception of some additional special review for the housing element, which I'll get to in a minute. So state law requires there to be seven mandatory sections to a general plan. Most of them are pretty self-explanatory. Land use is essentially, what are we putting and where are we putting it? Open space and conservation are very related. We're not just talking about like open spaces and vacant land, but we're talking about natural resources, scenic resources. Also, you know, our ecosystem, cultural resources, all of those sorts of things are incorporated in those two elements. Housing is one of the ones that's probably pretty self-explanatory. The housing element is, the goal of that is really to analyze the housing needs of the community and how are you going to try to strive to meet those within the community for community members. Circulation element, when do you think of circulation? You're usually thinking of traffic, but it's sort of much more than that as well. It's traffic, parking, it's making sure that all of the things that help make the community move are all happening and being able to be accommodated with the infrastructure that the city has. The safety element, that's related to hazards, wildfire, all of those different types of earthquakes, droughts, landslides, climate change, all of those things are addressed in the safety element. Noise, we're talking about stationary sources of noise, you know, highways, things of that nature, but also mobile sources of noise and how those things potentially impact the community and community members' health and wellbeing. There is now a eighth section that can either be incorporated as a standalone element or incorporated within the document, which is environmental justice. So this was adopted by the state in 2016 and is required to be incorporated in general plans now when you update more than at least two elements at a time. So the City of Avalon has not had to address environmental justice yet. But when we talk about environmental justice, we're talking about making sure that, you know, there are members of our community that might have more exposure to pollution, noise, you know, what are their economic opportunities, access to services, housing, and trying to create a more equitable community where everyone in the community has more equal access to all of those things. So those are the required elements, but there is also the option for communities to adopt a number of other elements to address all types of topics. A couple of examples would be, the City of Bridgecrest has a military element in their general plan because of their adjacency to naval station China Lake. Or the City of Orange, where I used to work, has a separate cultural resources and historic preservation element since they have a very substantial historic district. So while those are two topics that could be discussed in some of the other mandatory elements, communities can choose to have separate optional elements to go into more of a deep dive on particular topics. So what about the City of Avalon's general plan? So the first general plan was adopted in 1968 and originally only included two elements. So that would be land use and circulation, which were the only ones that were mandatory at that time, but was quickly updated after that to start adding more of what we see as mandatory elements today. The current general plan was adopted in 2013 and that was a comprehensive document that updated all seven of the mandatory general plan sections. Since 2013, the city has also adopted a new housing element in 2022 to address the six cycle, planning cycle for housing in particular. Housing elements, unlike the other elements, are reviewed on an eight-year planning cycle. And unlike the other elements, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, has particular oversight on the adoption of housing elements to make sure that they're complying with all of the state's policies and goals related to production and availability of housing and affordable housing in the community. As part of the adoption of a general plan, you also have to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. So the current general plan was adopted with what is known with an environmental impact report or an EIR. And the housing element was actually an addendum to that EIR. So the city did not have to update or adopt a new SEQA document at the time the housing element was updated.
This sandwich, it's a complete game changer.
Hey, your barber will be right with you.
One barber?
Who's that?
Hey, will I get some burgers after this? So in.
We're making dinner plans early, I guess. So in planning, one of the, the land use element is the element of the general plan that we have the most frequent interaction with. And one of the most important parts of that is the general plan, land use designations and the land use map. So the city's zoning code is actually in a, essentially derived from the general plan. So the general plan, land use map, sets up essentially different use areas, has descriptions of what are the, ideally, the types of uses that would be in those areas. And that helps guide the adoption of corresponding zoning districts and zoning map to help guide, again, the, where are we building what? The city, I will say that, you know, just having worked with the code for about two and a half years now, the general plan and the city's corresponding zoning code hasn't really changed a lot over time because the community has kind of been a small fixed footprint. A lot of the land uses that were envisioned even back as far as the '60s still are very reflective of kind of what's on the ground today. But with obviously an expansion of its new uses have been adopted over time, incorporating those into. of its new uses have been adopted over time, incorporating those into the zoning districts that are already there. So this is just a very short list of the many, many associated documents and regulations that implement the general plan. So the municipal code, not just Title IX, which is planning, but all of the other sections related to public safety, noise, even finance, are really helping implement the different goals and policies of the general plan. I already mentioned the zoning map. And then again, the title of the Avalon General Plan is the General Plan slash Local Coastal Plan. And that is because the general plan acts as the local coastal plan, the section of the city's local coastal program, which was adopted in 1981 and amended in 1993.
Why isn't Pebbley Beach included in that?
So Pebbley Beach and Upper Avalon Canyon were not annexed into the city until 1998.
Oh, so that, okay.
So the local coastal program boundary map has not been updated yet to include those areas. So kind of as a small tangent, that's why you'll see that having a local coastal program is really beneficial to the city because it gives the city the authority to review local, our coastal development permits and really have a lot more hands-on control over development processes in the city. But unfortunately, projects that are in those two areas that have not been incorporated yet have to be reviewed directly by the California Coastal Commission, which as you know, is a much more lengthy process, which is part of the reason that not only cities, but the Coastal Commission encourages communities to adopt local coastal programs to be able to make it a much more development-friendly process. So as far as future updates to the general plan, these are just a few things that will probably be coming over the next few years. The Fire Department, as you know, is currently received a grant and is working on updates to the city's local hazard mitigation plan. That document hasn't been updated since 2004, which is before the existing general plan was adopted. And so there is likely to be a safety element update that has to be done when that program or that local hazard mitigation plan is ready for council review in order to make sure that all of the general plan policies are up to date with all of the current recommendations that will probably come out of that process. In 2029, the city is going to have to work on their seventh cycle housing element. So as I mentioned that there's a, I know you just, it feels like you just updated the housing element. Well, we're going to get to do it all over again in 2029, since that will be the eight-year mark for our current plan and when the next housing element cycle will begin. And then by 2030, the current plan extends to 2030. So around, in the next few years, the city will also probably need to think about whether it's time to update the current general plan as a whole to look at the next 20 to 30 years, kind of a development visioning for the city. And as part of that process, it is possible the city will have to start to either add a new environmental justice element or policies to the existing plan. That'll depend a little bit on whether Avalon is actually considered a disadvantaged community under the regulations for environmental justice. It's like a three or four-step process to determine whether you qualify for that. Half the tools online were broken when I was trying to tentatively figure that out before the meeting today. But that will be something that we have to determine once it's time for the housing element to be updated again. That concludes my presentation. If there are any particular questions, let me know. Otherwise, the city's general plan and local coastal plan, housing element, and the local coastal program are all available online on the city website if anybody wants to review it or has any questions. Our municipal code is also available online. And the California Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, LCI, also has really great online resources related to general plans, what's supposed to be in them, what the intent is, how to facilitate great public engagement in the process. So really great tools there if you just want to know more.
I do have one question. When you talk about noise, I never thought about the Planning Commission maybe getting into the business of noise, because I don't think they've ever discussed that. But with the general plan and the Avalon Municipal Code, for example, noisy golf carts, we don't have a plan. You know, we talk about maybe getting rid of two strokes. And I mean, is that, that kind of noise is also included in what we call noise?
Yes.
Okay. So would we, we wanted to deal with that, would we first take it to the Planning Commission to discuss?
So if you wanted to make any updates to the city's municipal code regulations, noise is not in Title IX, which is the Planning Commission. So you wouldn't strictly have to go through them as part of that review process. But since it is something that they deal with regularly as part of the review for special use permits and that nature, I think having them involved in that process would be beneficial.
Okay, but make it simpler for me. Are we going to have to start addressing that first?
Maybe separate, I think. I don't think it has to.
I mean, we'd have to do something about the noise. And it's, that's one of the biggest, that's a big conflict between the noise and the smell. And I understand, you know, electrifying commercial ones, but, but what we've got going here is still pretty nasty. And however we could approach that would be good.
Yeah, the vehicles would come through council through a code amendment. I mean, the noise as it relates to those.
Okay, I'd like us to address that at some point. Yeah. I mean, we've kind of talked about it, but, okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Bob Greenlaw, city engineer. We've got the Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Project, Phase Two of it, project update for, for the community tonight. So we'd like to provide some information, what's the latest thing. So on our project team, we have Dave Maestros, Devin Hart, Matt Baker, Kevin Smith, and then consultants Mark Passvier and also Michael Thomas. That's the core team that's working on this and helped make this presentation to get, put this presentation together. So on this first slide here, this is a snapshot in time of where we've been, where we are, and where we're heading. You can see where that red line is there. That's where we are right now. Hopefully, the arrows won't get extended. And so by the time that we get down to 2028, we deliver the project, we have our tenants in there, and everybody's happily using this new state-of-the-art facility. So where we started was in 2022, and council members were involved during that. And we also had community input with our design intent documents with Hart Howerton, who was the architect, that many in the community had provided substantial funding to fund that design intent. And so we put together a set of documents of what was the wants and needs of the community to make those functional spaces for, you know, what our new facility would be. After that, we realized that once we went out and got that price, that we were short on funding. We were in the range of having about $10 million then. It looked like we had three good contractors that gave us some pricing on that. Two of those contractors had built projects and knew logistically what was happening. That was at the Vons contractor. And, you know, it was also, so the other contractor leaves me at this moment. But, so, so as far as, we realized that we were short on funding, so we went out and got some more funding in about the range of about $9 million extra. And so then we realized that, that we needed to put together the RFP because we're going to go into the design build. And that's when we did the contractor outreach, was when we brought Mark Passvier on. And we went out for about 30 outreaches to contractors to try to put together this design-build team because realized this is a very large project for the city to undertake, $20 million, somewhere in that range. It's going to be a two-year project. And so we needed to make, instead of like we normally would do, it would be, you know, just island contractors or some of the very local contractors, we made an outreach to our area that would supply contractors and that. So we, with those 30 outreaches, we got some new pricing on there. And we realized that we were still short on funds. And that's, excuse me, I'm losing my train of thought here. So we went into the Phase Zero RFP package documents here. And so that would be in, which we've been to council. So we've been on infrastructure upgrades, Worf infill, temporary facilities. So we've brought those to council. Those are, right now, the Worf infill. We just received bids on that yesterday. And then also what the remainder of the Phase One contract effort was, we had still some remaining work. That brings us up to today. Okay? And so what we're doing with those, that contractor outreach and getting that, ready for that RFP to go out to a design-build, we worked with LA Metro, we worked with our city attorney, our consultants. That was quite an outreach effort to be able to do that and, and get that prepared. And we're ready to put that on the street. We just received notice back today from LA Metro that we're very much within the next week or two, hopefully, that we'd be able to put that on the street. That gets us to the red line now, so we're heading to that progressive design-build RFP, which would lead to a design assist, and then a projected construction duration of 18 to 24 months. So you can see from those milestones I talked about, the June 22nd design intent, we, we had 15.7 million, that was the engineer's estimate. We feel that we were short. We went out for the additional funding. And so then we came into this result even after that contractor outreach, which there, that's where I lost my train of thought. This was, there was four contractors that weighed in and with this design-build team, and it was going to be in the range of $31 to $42 million with what we had designed with the Hart Howerton. So we realized at that point that we needed to right-size the project. So we went through that effort with Mark Passvier and also Michael Thomas. So available funding at this point, 17 million. There's more funding coming in, but I mean, that's the number we're using right now. Project budget is 20 million. Project goals, to complete the project without putting the city into debt, you know, and I mentioned that $31 to $40 million number. Final building to be maintained by the city forces. So we want to make sure that we're selecting materials that aren't so specialized that we can't, with our own maintenance crews, maintain this. Because if we're not able to maintain it, it's going to look like the state that it's in right now. Okay? We need to be able to select those materials and be able to maintain that along the way with the available funds that we have. And the project would accommodate growing passenger capacity. So in saying that, you know, success would be defined as, you know, a highly functional transportation facility that is state-of-the-art and is aesthetically pleasing. We're going to make sure that we have that too. And it's delivered on time and on budget. So, and that's in June of this year, that's when we decided that we needed to right-size the project. So that's what the effort I'm going through right now to be able to tell you what we did next. Value engineering, okay? And that helps us to right-size the project. We maintained all the commercial spaces that we brought, that we looked at with Hart Howerton, you know. So that was working with the community and with also with the tenants that were out there and cross-channel carriers, cruise ships, what are the functional needs for the spaces and the space design. And then make sure that we created an AD access throughout the entire facility with no barriers, no obstacles, created fully covered boarding areas. We heard that from the community that that was one of the major wants, okay, and needs. Increased the passenger queueing capacity. So we want to make sure that it's not just good for now, that it's good for the next 20 years, no matter what, if we do use it or not. We want to make sure that we have the capacity for the increase in cross-channel carriers if necessary, and also the increase in cruise ship passengers if necessary. There would be space out there and it would be functionally good. And then we maintain the original design concept of the building footprint. So whatever the space was in plan view, we tried to maintain those concepts because the community had put a lot of input and there was a lot of effort put into that. We eliminated the second story. The second story was mainly where, you know, we had the additional space that could be utilized as a restaurant or community area. We simplified the concourse area. We reduced the overall volume of the structure. And then we maintained the ability to make an architecturally interesting, otherwise beautiful, structure. So this is where we left off when we were at Hart Howerton. This was the main tower that when Hart Howerton came in, they looked at both from the land side and they did an opaque aerial view. And then they came in from the, the waterside and did that. And they said, now look at the bookend with a casino. We don't want to compete with that, but we want to have something of such mass that we, we need to have, you know, several stories there. Okay? So that's how we came on the tower. And then if you remember, they went out with the two arms that was welcoming, welcoming the, the visitors to the island with the two arms, the north concourse and south concourse. So that's how we got with it, to the, at least the, the structure of the design. So now, this rendering right here, so don't look what's underneath the blue lines because that's still open to design. But what we're trying to show you here is above, which is ghosted out in the background there, is that was the size, the mass of the tower. And then the right sizing, what we're doing is, as we're losing the second floor on the restaurant, and then the complimentary going out, going out to the north in south concourse, we're bringing that down in the same scale. Okay? So you can see, that's what this picture represents. And this graphic does the same in the north and south concourse. If you're out of the waterside looking back in, you can see how big, you know, that ghosted structure is above it. And that's what you would be seeing in, in the original design. And you can see how we reduced it down. What was above that in the original design, there was windows, clear-story windows all along those roofs. And the tower was an open tower all the way up. Okay, what this graphic depicts is, remember I said that we didn't really, we didn't change the footprint? So what the orange area is, is the existing mole structure. So that's the existing terminal down there to the bottom. And then those are the existing pergolas along the waterfront there. And then what you see in the lavender color is the new terminal with the new concourses to the north, to the right side of the photo, and then the start of the south concourse. And then the lighter blue is the remaining south concourse. Okay? So what we want to show you here is, those spaces are still there. We just have lost the height of the building. Okay. This is why I want to show you how we thoughtfully went about this as a team. So the, again, the, the purple color there, the lavender color, that's the tower, the octagon there, we reduced that in height. So then the pistachio color there is the north concourse. We reduce that in height by lowering, not having the clear-story windows, just having a roof line. The tan color is the restaurant space. And now it just becomes a roof, an open space. And it is where, underneath is where the core of the tenants will be. That's where your ticketing, your bathrooms, deli and such is going to be there. The yellow color is the, the north concourse. Again, that's the piece of the roof that was tall, lowers down. And then the south concourse, the light blue there is the continuation of the south concourse. The pink color there was a second set of bathrooms. And we, really, there was bathroom fixtures that were numbered because of the restaurant being there. So we could reduce down the size. We also did a quick check, what's on the other side at Long Beach as far as bathroom fixtures, both men and women's? And our current design has that plus in it. So by reducing this space down, that saved a lot of money, not being able to, not being, not putting that second restroom in. What we're going to do with that space now is that's where we're going to make, you know, all our electrical rooms, our comm rooms and all that, and some storage for the harbor master. Okay, what this graphic depicts Okay, what this graphic depicts in the red outline there, that's the terminal building footprint I just showed you. But also what we're going to show you is all the transportation design that we did with the drop-off zone that goes back over the wharf, the parking that goes back over the wharf, and, you know, the kiss and go there, that's, that's the drop-off area. All of that stayed intact. So we didn't downsize that. Okay, and so our current steps for procurement, see if I didn't miss a slide here. Okay, yep, I'm on track. So we got a four-step stage zero. Okay, we've been recently in front of council here requesting that we go out to bid on these. Okay, and that's the wharf infill, which we just received bids yesterday. And then that's also the finish right next to the crane where we didn't finish on that phase one project. We still have one set of grates and some concrete work to do there. We have the utility installation. So that's the installation all the way from the trailhead to the mole along the curb face there. And we're going to be getting that done before the next visitor season. So that's the next piece that'll be go out to bid. And then the infrastructure for the temporary facilities, we'll have that out. And I'll show you a slide here in a minute. And then the equipment procurement. Okay, and the equipment procurement is mainly the long-lead electrical items. Because there's, when you get big switching gear, it's anywhere from 12 months to 16 months to get, you know? So you don't want to make, you want to make sure you have that ordered early or you're not going to be occupying your building. Okay, so this is the wharf infill site plan, just to let everybody know, this is what we actually just bid. Those two black areas there on the wharf there, the colored in black there, that's where it used to be the old baggage loading areas from the steamer. And we're going to fill those in permanently with grates, like the other grate it opened. And they'll be able to handle a highway load, an H20 load. And so that way, we can always be able to move a fire truck, a concrete truck or whatever out there. It's going to help us facilitate construction, but it'll also be a permanent installation. And then we also have that one little square there by the crane. That's the balance of phase one work. Okay, this is a little bit of what's coming at you as far as what we do with the temporary facilities and getting that stuff done. So we wanted to lay out where the temporary facilities are going to be. They're going to be by float four and five. So this is where everybody would go to be able to get their ticket, to be able to, the deli and then also the harbor master would have a space out there. And then we have the, right at the mole, you see we have the vehicular traffic flow. And what we're showing you there is when the building is being built, which is the cyan color there, the blue color, that there's going to be, and then there's a dark blue line, there's going to be a fence that's erected and will stay up during that construction. That goes through the area where the taxis are right now. So we, we have to figure out where everybody's going to be because this is about an 18 to 24 month construction period. So what we're showing you there is that same kind of drop-off that we are used to, but it gets squished together a little bit. And that's going to be for golf carts only. So you'd be able to drop off on the outer circle, the outside lane there. And then on the inside lane, there'd be somebody stationed there to make sure you keep moving. And that's for golf carts only. Now, so everybody asks, what's going to happen with the taxis? So what we've come up with the taxis is that we're going to set up a taxi line along where the pavers are, along the seaplane ramp. You know, how are we going to get that accomplished? Well, we're, the taxis will actually be running on the paver so that we don't take any of the two-way roadway. And then we'll build another temporary deck that goes out over where the parking is for about eight feet on the seaplane ramp, okay? And that's where you would load the taxis, but that would also be to replace the area that we're using on the walkway. So you'd still be able to walk out the Pebbley Beach Road. So how do we get the taxis turned around safely? We go out there and we put some temporary markings in that area in Lover's Cove. It's not all the way to Lover's Cove, it's only in that first bin there. We move the K rail, we make a 50-foot diameter, put the markings there, they're able to turn around. It takes 30 seconds to get from the mole to where that circle is there and 30 seconds back. So one minute, they'd be able to safely turn around, pull into that, start queuing up, just like if you're at Long Beach Airport and you're queuing up on a taxi line to be able to get there, or the shuttles. So this is a little more detail on the temporary facilities. So you can see the red area with the brown background there. And what that's depicting is that we're going to build some temporary decking in that area to get everything leveled out and to provide that queuing space for the ticketing and also for the bathrooms to sit there. And, and then also with the deli and the harbor storage area there. So on the right rectangle there, there's like 12 restrooms, 12 stalls here. And we'll show you what those look like, okay? And there, there's a deck out there with a rail around it so that you can wait. Then you can also see the other on the left rectangular shape there, there's, that's where the ticketing would be. And of course, that has deck. So realize that that's over that green area where the landscaping is. The landscaping will go away in the interim, okay? And it'll be replaced. And those frontage pieces will be designed so that we can replace that landscaping and maybe even the pedestrian mall, the sidewalk there, the surface gets a little bigger there, whatever. We have the chance with this design to change that, but it's not lost forever. It's just removed so that we can use this space during that time. That will also have interim covering over it. So it has, going to have posts for sale cloth over those two decks and also back to those pergolas while we're in construction so that people are out of the elements. This is the, the restrooms that we've selected for, on the interim. They're, they come in a kind of a package of two restrooms. These are not chemical toilets. These are flush toilets with water and they have also water to the, to the sinks. And they have a fan and they have a light. And so we're just making this set up as a unisex, so we don't have to get male, female. You just, if one's open, you go in there, you wait in line. And we're purchasing these. So they'll be available for another use after we get done with the mole project. This is at least kind of a sample of what the office is. I mean, the tenants will be, I mean, there's going to be more windows, there's going to be ticket windows. We can paint them any color, make them bright colors, whatever. But at least this is the size that is right now. And you won't be walking into this to get your tickets. There'll be ticket windows and really, it's just for staff. Okay, so again, so that, you know, we're zooming back out again to show you. We zoomed in to show you the temporary facilities, kind of zoomed in to show you the vehicular traffic and then taxi, kind of this all putting it back together for you. See if we got it right. Yeah, here again, we're zooming back in. So you can see why we have to do that turnaround there. And you can see where the tan color is, that's the lay-down yard, just like phase two, I mean, phase one for the construction. That's where the contractor will use it. So what we're trying to do is set it up so that the contractor has their space, they're fenced in. Where we're putting those great infills, there's going to be a 20-foot roadway that goes behind that fenced area. So that's for like contractor access, but it also is for emergency access during construction. So we get the contractor in their space. We get everybody, in the public and, and all the tenants in their space. We get everybody used to driving into the drop-off zone, where they're going to get their tickets, get them trained. Hopefully, after a month, that just becomes second nature. They can live happily for 18 months by construction. And we're not changing things up. So we're not going through those stages of construction where we're changing things up. Once we put it in place, that's why we're taking all this effort right now to do this, is so that it's all moves smoothly right from day zero. Okay, that puts it back together. This gives you a little better look at what the turnaround would be. Puts it back together. And then, so now you ask, what about the big trucks? Because we have, you know, SCE, we have fire, we have contractors. Where are they going to be? So that area where we have that green curb there, that's a short-term green curb, we're going to change to a white curb. And it's going to be like your cell phone drop-off zone. Really, whoever's in those vehicles should stay with those vehicles. And then people come and then they're able to come from the mole and get in and get the rides, you know, on that mass transportation there. So we've thought about that, too.
And that's just very limited time, limited parking time.
Very, yeah, it really is like, this is your white curb, do not stop. That whole thing at the airport, it was really, that's the intent. At least during the busiest times. We need to keep that traffic moving. Okay, so remember I said we got where the red line was and where we're at right now? So that's the progressive design build procurement, okay? And that's what we've been working on with city attorney, with our consultants now to make sure that we get, and with LA Metro. There was a code that allowed us design build, you know, prior to probably say a year ago that allowed us to do design build. But within the last year, the, there's been new code within the public contract code that is really robust for local agencies to be able to do these different types of design builds and gives the authority to do that. So that, that's great. And that's what we worked on with city attorney to, to be able to get the documents in the correct form. Besides LA Metro, because this is all federal funding, make sure that we've got all those boxes checked and so that before we put it on the street. And so progressive design build is a project delivery method that involves the early collaboration between the city, the contractor, architect and engineer. So it puts that, everybody in a team together. And then it allows for the city to have a higher level of budget control, similar to what we're doing with the workforce housing. You know, each month as we come in, we're asking, what's the current cost? And that's part of the requirements that we put in when we hire this team, is that we always have to keep that cost in front of us so that we stay within that budget. Then allows the initial contract through design and construction, one design entity, you know, so the architect, engineer and the contractor. Once we let that contract, it's all the way through the end of construction. That team will take us through that. And the city maintains the control, the ability to control the design process. And then also what it does, and it's off the end of the slide, it creates an opportunity for early delivery on certain aspects of it. So when you put out like a design bid build, you get all the documents done and then you put it out to bid and then you award the contract and then they mobilize. And then, you know, then we start building the project. Well, on a design build, you already have the contractor on board and you can, you can get him working on certain pieces that are already finished and you know what you're doing with it, you know? Say like tearing down the building, okay? Because we know what to do there. Or, you know, getting some of the civil site work done, so the underground work. Or even getting the foundation, because they're still working on elements of the plan that don't have anything to do, you know, with finalizing the plans and we're already finished with the foundation plans and it doesn't affect those. So we can get earlier delivery on some of that. Okay, so next steps, award the contract for stage zero scopes of the wharf infill, the infrastructure. So you can see some real dates that we have there. So the seventh on the wharf infill, the 21st on October 21st. And the equipment and temporary facilities coming in November. So want to get those out. And the reason that those are so important to get out is they need to be done before the next visitor season, okay? So we need to be finished with that. Even if it's even early delivery on some of the temporary facilities, we need to have everything in place. We can decide when to put the buildings in place, but all of the underground, all of the deck work and all that, that would, that would be, have an impact on our visitors, we want to get that done. Then we'd solicit the progressive design build RFP, that's in October, so that's right around the corner. And then we'll have interviews December 25 and then award the contract in '26 and we're off and running. So, and then we begin the terminal project, you know? And then so, then we're back to this slide again. That red line, it keeps moving every minute. So hopefully, we don't extend those arrows. And, and I think I lost that other slide there here. This is for anybody that's interested in any other information. We have the web. Okay, here it is. So for more information, we have a webpage there. And then you also can reach out to us, okay, to the, to our team here. So any questions? That's the end of the presentation.
I have one. Are we going to need to use any of our local staff to help with any of this or this is all going to be contracted out? For, when you talk about the platform being built, are we using any of our guys for any of the work?
So I would anticipate there'd be, it's, it's a hybrid where we can use, and we're not impacting, like Jackie talks, all our major projects. But where we can save money, because remember, this is all prevailing wage, federal prevailing wage job, where we can do that and be strategic about it and that we have the resources and we're really good at doing those things efficiently, then I think we should, okay? Because that's going to, that's going to save us money.
Okay, excellent. Questions or comments? Okay, another one. I'm assuming that you've looked under those pavers to make sure when those vehicles run through their nut, because you know how some of those pavers, you know, they've been undermined so much and then we have to do stuff where, that's all really solid for those vehicles to travel on.
Before we do that, we're supposed to be doing the Pebbley Beach Road project. That's coming at you very soon.
Oh, okay.
That's another one of the things where we received, we were ready with SEQA. So we had SEQA environmental, but then we received federal funding and we have to go backtrack and get the NEPA clearance and work through that. So we're very close on that one for you.
Does the audience have any questions? No, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm glad we went through it forward. It's good, yeah. Okay, consent calendar.
Item number one, approval of the minutes from September 2nd, 2025, regular city council meeting. Item two, approval of the disbursements for August 25th, 2025 through September 5th, 2025, totaling $967,747.10. Item three, adopt a resolution approving a pledge of revenue agreement with the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery for post-closure maintenance for the Pebbley Beach landfill facility number 19-AA0061. And item four, authorize the city manager or designee to purchase a used 2019 to 2024 Ford Ranger to replace the current Harbor Patrol vehicle, a 2006 Ford Explorer, for an amount not to exceed some of $42,000.
I can't believe how expensive a used vehicle is. That's crazy, isn't it? Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve items one through four on consent.
Move in second and call for the vote.
We'll be taking an oral vote count tonight. Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Lovell.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
All ayes.
Item number five.
Okay, item number five is approval of, under general business, approval of the encroachment permit for private improvements within the public right-of-way for 358 Clarissa Avenue.
Something we can do about the AC? I don't know if anybody else is cold, but I'm.
I am cold.
Yeah, it is kind of chilly. Thank you. Sorry, Jackie.
No, no worries. I run hot, so I'm fine. 358 Clarissa encroachment permit. Applicant Tony Rubio. The application was submitted July 28th and is for, oh, sorry, typo there, should be Clarissa Public Right-of-Way. So the scope of work is staircase encroachment into the alley between Clarissa and Catalina. The, this, the staircase is supposed to be secondary access only and be able to be removable.
But is it Catalina? Because Clarissa's here and then there's Wisconsin and then Catalina's here. So do you mean Clemente?
I will show you a picture on the next slide. I will show you a picture on the next slide.
I was so confused when I was.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is a little bit of confusing. But I'll, the picture will, will help.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, not at all. The second-floor dwelling may not be designated as a primary access, so those staircases are not primary, and the floor plan cannot be changed in any way for the second door, second-floor dwelling. The second-floor balcony that, and first-floor patio will encroach 22 inches into Clarissa Right-of-Way. That must stay at grade. The patio will stay at grade. That will give enough room, four and a half feet. So, and any fence will have to be at the property line. And then here's, here are the pictures to help describe this area. So the left picture, this is the alleyway that we're talking about here. There's some stairs there from another property adjacent to this one. So again, these will have to be removable. The applicant understands that. They will have to be removable within an hour or two because we have a sewer main going through that area. Does that help with the picture?
It is Clemente, it's not Catalina.
Right.
Yeah, it's Clemente.
It's Clemente.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The staff report, I think, just had Catalina instead of Clemente, but the, the detail on the report was Clemente.
Right.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay.
And the balcony, the, you could see there, and then on the, in the middle, and then on the right will be at grade. Right now, there's a sort of a little planter that will be taken down, and it will be level with the sidewalk. The permit criteria, desirable and necessary, the staircase provides a safe secondary access to the upstairs dwelling. The balcony adds private outdoor space consistent with the, with the neighborhood. No adverse impact, as it does not interfere with adjacent properties, utilities, or public facilities. Please note that the staircases do need to be removable, as I mentioned. No public safety concern, and that meets grading, drainage, and clearance standards, and no effect to traffic or emergency access. The applicant will maintain improvements and record maintenance easement with conditions. The condition will be five years, and then city manager designated to establish insurance, bond requirement, and maintenance standards. If no action, this improvement will not proceed, and the improvement for safety access and neighborhood improvements will not proceed as well. So the action we're asking today is approve the encroachment permit, authorize city manager to finalize terms. And I asked the property owner to be here. I don't think he.
Representative.
Oh, great. A representative. Well, so if you have questions, the representative is here.
And again, fire department has reviewed this, so this is perfect for fire access.
Will we still have access to that other stairwell, or this will block us to that other stairwell?
They're, they're required to remove it. So if you need access.
Emergency, can we, the people in that other house get by this stairwell?
As far as I know, they can, but again, if they, if you need access, they have to be removable within a reasonable time. We asked about one or two hours.
I just don't want to block those other stairs, so the people have an exit at that other house.
Oh, let me go back to the picture.
Right, I, I think, I think we've looked at that. We've been out there and looked at that, that there is that, right? Yes.
There's an alley between both of them.
So you mean there's another, this isn't their, this staircase in the alley is not their only entry and exit point?
Correct, it's not.
Okay.
It's a secondary.
And what do you mean by removable? Are they going to like go up like a fire escape kind of thing?
That's the intent.
As long as chief is happy with the height, the clearance when it's up.
In fact, in the picture on the left, you can see the opening.
To the right of it, right?
To the, the top. That's where they're supposed to go. I don't have a pointer, but.
If the fire chief is cool, I'm cool, right?
What?
If the fire chief is cool, I'm cool. Is, is there any, is there any reason you need to look at this again? Is there any reason you might need to look at this again, or look at this?
Prior to final approval, we'll have the chief walk through.
Okay.
We'll, we'll mark it out.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, no further questions, council?
I make a motion to approve encroachment permit at 358 Clarissa Avenue with the construction of a new staircase within the public alley between Clarissa and Clemente Avenues, providing a secondary access to the second-floor unit, a new balcony on the second floor, and a patio at grade on the first-floor dwelling unit, both encroaching up to 22 inches into the Clarissa Avenue Right-of-Way. To authorize city manager or his designee to approve, to finalize, and execute the encroachment permit, associated recordable maintenance covenant easement, and to negotiate with the property owners to amounts of the required bond and liability insurance.
Second. Move in second and call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce.
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
All ayes.
Item six.
Thank you. Item number six is first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 9-5, article 5, for low and moderate-income housing, and article 6, accessory dwelling units of title 9 of the Avalon Municipal Code implementing housing programs 1415 as set forth in six-cycle general plan housing element and adoption of exemption findings under SEQA-KELLY.
All right, take it away.
Thank you, mayor. So item before you this evening is related to the general implementation of the general plan housing element. As I previously mentioned this evening, the general plan housing element is a state-mandated section where the city identifies housing needs, opportunities, and constraints, and creates a housing plan to help meet the goals and policies addressed in that general plan housing element. The city's current housing element was adopted in 2022, and it contains 26 programs that the city is supposed to use to implement those housing element goals. Tonight, we are working with program 14, which is accessory dwelling units, and program 15, adequate sites for lower-income households on non-in vacant sites previously identified. So for program 14, accessory dwelling units, staff has prepared updates to article 6 of chapter 9.5, providing specific development standards and processing related to ADUs. And by ADUs, I'll just use that to refer to both accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, so as to not have to duplicate. The ordinance before you provides updates to address all of the new ADU regulations that were adopted in 2024. Most of these are administrative items related to updating code requi, you know, code references, clarifying definitions, and providing specific ways to clarify how you would measure the height of an ADU, for instance. In addition, staff reviewed the objective architectural design standards for ADUs and recommended updates as well to clarify architectural requirements for window and door placement for privacy, to add a requirement that the slope of the roof on an ADU should match the slope of the primary dwelling unit for architectural consistency, and has also recommended revising the requirements for site landscaping to require compliance with the objective standards of the underlying zone. Previously, the landscape standards were pretty robust in terms of requiring a certain side planter size, and a certain size of tree and shrubs, and staff was recommending removing those and going back to the underlying zoning requirements, one, because the ADU standards were much higher than the underlying zone already required. There's already architectural requirements for ADUs to address privacy concerns, which I think landscaping was partially intended to address. Also, we have very little land in terms of setbacks to work with for that landscape area, and we would rather make sure that that is clear to meet all of the fire access standards for safety, especially in the flats where we have little to no setback on a lot of structures. And again, it's, the idea is to make it less burdensome and easier to apply. And also landscaping requires a water allocation. So rather than hold a project up for an additional water allocation requirement, we'd like to make that as streamlined as possible. Program 15, which is the adequate sites program, I won't repeat the entire title again, is specifically related to providing streamlined review for high-density housing projects on properties that were identified as housing opportunity sites. In this case, there was one housing opportunity site identified during the six-cycle housing element, and that is what I refer to as the Tremont Street property. That was actually a carryover from the fifth-cycle housing element. It's a partially developed property that already has residential units on it and is currently zoned for low and moderate-income housing. In order to comply with state streamlining provisions for affordable housing projects, staff has recommended additional language be added to the zoning requirements for the LM Zone, which states that residential development on that particular Tremont Street property would be considered a byright use and may be processed without additional discretionary review, such as planning commission review, when at least 20% or more of the units are reserved for low and very low-income households, and the project has a density of at least 30 dwelling units per acre. This does not mean that projects on that property must build to that density. They can still build to the underlying zoning if they would like to. But this is state regulations are essentially intended to provide a carrot for, you know, increased density if you provide more affordable housing at lower income levels, which are the hardest ones essentially to get developed, especially with private development. Planning Commission reviewed both of these proposed section amendments at the September 3rd meeting and did recommend approval to the city council, but did also recommend, have two specific recommendations related to accessory dwelling units. One is that Planning Commission recommended that access to the Avalon Coast transit system should be considered as public transit for the purposes of applying exemption criteria from providing off-street parking for ADUs. In this case, there are already state law exemptions from providing off-street parking if you're near a public transit system. However, public transit in government code is specifically defined in a way that coast does not qualify. You have to have a fixed schedule, fixed stops. You know, coast is an on-demand system that would otherwise not meet those criteria.
And with regard to that, have, has not there been discussion about having them do that? The defined stops and, if we do that, then we wouldn't have to provide parking spaces for all the housing we're going to build, right?
That's why we're making the change in the definition to include that.
The coast, okay.
Yeah.
And then, okay.
So in order to accomplish, you know, being able to still provide that parking exemption, Planning Commission recommended that coast be added to the definition of public transit system in the city's municipal code to allow that essentially, essentially any property that has access to the public right-of-way that could call coast would now be able to take advantage of the parking exemption.
With that in mind, though, aren't we, and Bob Greenlaw has a question for you or Mr. Maestros, that we had planned for them to be able to have a parking spot, but with this in there, we wouldn't have to guarantee that everybody gets a parking spot, and it might be better, better use of the land?
Yeah, so it is the opinion of staff that it kind of expanding that definition of public transit and being able to have more properties qualify for the parking exemption is consistent with state law. The state always likes to see you removing parking requirements rather than adding them. So it is definitely consistent in that sense with state law, that we are essentially broadening the ability of people to take advantage of the exemption, and like you said, thus not have to reserve precious, developable property in the city just for parking.
Right, and I guess that's my question, because I think, weren't you planning on having a parking spot for every one of those, those buildings that we build, every one of those apartments?
No, we're, we're not going to have on-unit parking. Like, it might have been in one of the original iterations of that, but no, there will be either off-street parking or street parking accessible for that.
But we can't, we didn't, I guess we can't deny them the ability to have a vehicle just to park off-street, right? I mean, because 22 units off-street is taking up a lot of public parking.
The conflict in our current code is that I, I believe we require an off-street parking for an ADU, but prohibit a vehicle for any resident that is living in an ADU. So we're requiring them to have the parking, but not allowing them to have the vehicle. So we're taking the space with no essential use for it currently.
Okay, thank you.
And that kind of goes right into Planning Commission's second recommendation, which was if a property owner did want to get an autoet vehicle permit, that then in that case, they should provide an off-street parking space in order to have the vehicle. As you know, as Dave just mentioned, currently ADUs are prohibited from getting residential vehicle permits. However, when the council discussed earlier this year making changes to the vehicle code when Jocelyn had that presentation, it seemed like there was direction that council would like to consider potentially allowing ADUs to also get residential vehicle permits. So the intent of this particular amendment would essentially say that, you know, you're still exempt from providing parking if you don't have a vehicle permit, but if you did want to acquire a vehicle permit, you would need to provide the appropriate off-street parking the way that other residential, new residential properties are required to provide. So there's flexibility there. If you don't want the vehicle permit, that's fine, you don't have to provide an off-street parking space, but if you do, then you're going to need to provide one. Now, this, if you want to allow ADUs to have vehicle permits, that's going to need to come back as a separate tax amendment to the vehicle code. But in the meantime, this would at least prep the ADU section of the code to accept that change if council so chooses to make that action in the future.
I'm not liking any of this. And we have an abundance of parking issues in this town, in that there's nowhere to park. So if, if the current code is saying that we require ADUs to provide parking, why do we deny them? What's the rationale of denying them a permit for, for a residential golf cart? I don't understand.
I mean, I, I think that that's, I can't speak to why it was put in the code. It was done a while ago of why that denial was, but it's part of the code that the ADUs can't have an autoet attached to it.
That doesn't make any sense to me, because an ADU cannot be a short-term rental. It has to be, you know, a long-term rental. So why, if somebody's going to live there, I, I don't understand why you would deny them.
We're trying to fix that, that's what we're.
Okay, but, but they're saying that, okay, so it's an exemption. So, I mean, the mayor said, okay, originally we were going to have parking for all of those things, and now Kelly's saying, no, we're not. Or we're gonna, we're, we're talking about not requiring it.
So it's saying if they don't have a vehicle, then there's not parking required, because they can't currently have a vehicle, but we're requiring them to have an off-street parking space, which they don't need. So what we're trying to do is clean it up to say they, if they're not going to have a, if they, there's not going to be a required parking space for them because they're not allowed to have a vehicle. If they choose to get a vehicle, then they would have to get an off-street parking space, which I have a question about in a second, but, because my issue is the curb cut that's created that takes away the parking space to create the parking space, which seems ridiculous, because then it becomes one person's parking space and not everyone's parking space.
Right.
So I have some challenges with that aspect of it, but this is basically saying right now that you're not required to have to hold out land for a parking space if you're not going to have a vehicle.
Sure, but, okay, so, but that's for an ADU, right? Okay, but, so what about the Tremont project?
That's separate, those are all regular units.
Yeah, so I, but I, I, I guess that's where I got confused. I was hearing that the parking exemption was going to be lumped in with that, too.
So this is ADU-specific?
It's ADU-specific. Okay.
Now, the, the current required parking for residential in the municipal code is one parking space per unit, one autoet space per unit is the parking standard otherwise, and that continues to be the standard for residential dwelling units.
Right, and so a new project, like the Tremont project, will still be required to have parking?
We'll have parking, it's just now each individual unit in front of its unit.
Does have their own spot somewhere.
There is going to be.
Oh, well, yeah, that's fine. But, but as long as, as long as the project provides for each unit to be able to park somewhere.
Yes, yes. That's going to be there, it's just not going to be pulling it off of Tremont into a space.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm sorry, I helped, I helped confuse that.
Okay, because, yeah, I don't want to see that go away. I think if anybody develops a multi-unit dwelling. I think if anybody develops a multi-unit dwelling, that parking should be required.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, that will remain that way, and then, of course, parking, you know, for a new project will always be reviewed as part of development applications before the Planning Commission as well, to make sure that they're adequately designed to serve a project. So...
Can I ask a question on the, on the secondary part of it? I think all of this information is great and the updates are good. The only question I have is to speak to that loss of parking due to curb cut. I'm wondering if we can amend that to say an appropriate parking space that is, if it's someone that has space on the back of their property, or there's an alley adjacent parking, that it be required to be in that space or something that doesn't create less parking by creating parking?
Right, because when you cut the curb, nobody else can park in front of it.
So, that's my only hesitation in saying absolutely yes to this, is just having that clarification that that process should require them to have a parking space that doesn't remove parking from everyone else for the sake of that single parking space.
I, I think that, I think that should be citywide, that that should be the focus, rather than just allowing curb cuts that, that do exactly what you're saying. So, I think, you know, primary focus should be that, find a space if, and curb cuts should be a last resort.
Maybe like me, I have those two little ramps we put up so I can fit, you know, move in between the houses and stuff.
But that's, the hard part, too, is then if you have someone park in front of you, the ramp...
Well, I just pull them on up, but sometimes we get stuck if somebody, you know, on street sweeping day, somebody will come and lock us in front, but it's only till 12 o'clock.
Right.
So, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah. Yeah.
What would you like to do on item number six?
Is that, so is that change something that we should be adding to this language, or is that something that's a general city code change that we need to look at, or?
If council's agreeable, I would like to see us put some language in there that that's the priority for parking citywide, not just ADU.
Definitely agreeable on that.
And then we can...
I am.
Looks like we're on consensus.
We can bring that language and bring that back.
Yeah, so in that case, I would recommend we can bring back a code amendment to the off-street parking requirements of title nine, but specifically just prioritizing the placement of off-street parking spaces.
So, we can introduce that, you can introduce that and add that without having to come back?
That's a separate, separate for the whole code, not just this, yes. So, we'd approve this separately then.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon, amending chapter nine dash five, article five, low mod and income housing, and article six, accessory dwelling units of title nine of the Avalon Municipal Code implementing housing programs 14 and 15 as set forth in the six cycle general plan housing element and adoption of exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second. Moved in second, a call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Item number seven?
Item number seven is procurement of Motorola portable series radio. Chief, did you have anything to add to this, or council have any questions of chief regarding city of Avalon purchase of, of these radios that comply with LA RIC's compatible, compatibility?
The only question I had was just, I know that it's the single provider that we were getting the quote from, and just wondered if you could speak to why it's just the one provider.
Motorola, they've, they gave us the LA County contract pricing, so it beats all the other ones. We did the quotes the last, last year, we bought seven radios, this year, we only need four more, but their pricing was way, was below the others. And then, he is very familiar with our radio reps who, LA County helps program all these radios, so they, we buy them, they hand them off, and then once we get them, they, there's Wi-Fi enabled, so once they initially program them, we're able to go next door to Baywatch, and once we're on their Wi-Fi, it updates when the radios update. But more importantly, he's, he works with the, it's the county guy, and they all work together, and their pricing was the best.
Thank you.
Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding to exempt this procurement from competitive bidding requirements due to utilization of cooperative bidding procedures as outlined in Avalon Municipal Code three dash four dot one 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 D, to authorize the city manager and/or his designee to execute a contract with Motorola Solutions to purchase four new portable Motorola APX 8,000 radios for the not to exceed sum of $65,000 as budgeted in the city's fiscal year 2025, 2026, capital improvement plan project two five four five zero one, account number one zero two four five dash six five four seven.
I'll second. Moved in second, a call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
And item number eight?
Final item, item number eight is enter into a maintenance service agreement with Perry Plumbing and Pipe Linings to epoxy lining repairs for sewer mains. Jamie Milak presented this, or prepared this staff report. I don't know if there's any questions from council specifically, but we were able to acquire two quotes, significantly different pricing on the two quotes, Perry Plumbing, we are familiar with, we've used them before, and that's the recommendation to go with them.
Any comments or questions?
Both Jamie and I are here if you have questions.
Okay. I think we're good? Okay, council?
Well, I guess I'll make the motion. Per the city's procurement policy, authorize the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with Perry Plumbing and Pipe Linings to provide maintenance services for the installation of epoxy lining of two verified place sewer mains in the amount not to exceed $32,036.
Very specific, I'll second.
Let's call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
There's no further comments? Good night, Tony. Meeting is adjourned.